I now call the city council meeting to order. If all that are able to and like to, please rise for the invocation led by Bob Backus, followed by the pledge allegiance led by the chair.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we come to thee tonight from the administrative offices of our great city. We're instructed in the Bible to pray for those who are in authority. In Paul's second letter to Timothy in the second chapter, we read, "Therefore I exhort, first of all, that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a peaceable life in all godliness and reverence." Our Father, we come to you this evening, thanking you for allowing us to live in a country where we can read our Bible and pray to you without fear of government interference. We thank thee for our founding fathers, who gave us our Declaration of Independence, our Bill of Rights, and our Constitution. Now, we ask that thou would bless Mayor Battle, City Council President Russell, Councilman Showers, Councilwoman Robinson, Councilman Kling, and Councilman Cover. Be with them as they conduct the business of our city. Let them always look to you for guidance. Be with our police department, our fire department, and our first responders, as they protect us, keep us safe, and take care of us in emergencies that may arise. Bless them and their families. Be with all our city employees as they go about the business of keeping our city safe and functional. We ask a special blessing tonight on our troops, as they protect and ensure our freedoms. Especially be with those troops in foreign lands. Keep them safe and bring them back home safely to their families. And finally, Father, please bless our nation. Be with our president, our Congress, and our Supreme Court, as they make decisions that govern us. Please be with the citizens of our great nation. Have our citizens elect people that will be God-fearing men and women, and people who will always look to thee. We ask all these things, in Christ's name. Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Backus. The minutes from the December 4th meeting have been received and will stand approved. There's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Mr. Hatfield to come up, please. Mr. Hatfield, as many of you came in tonight, you saw a sweeper machine that was out there. And that sweeper machine is being given as a gift, a Christmas gift, to the city. And Mr. Hatfield's going to explain what it's for, and talk a little bit about it.
First, I'd like to ask Mark Haddon, I think he's got a guest to come up. Mayor, you know, this is just another example of how great our city is, and that we have citizens want to step up to the plate and help out in times when people need some things. And Mark saw we had a need for a power brush. I'm kind of excited about it, because our department's going to get the most out of it. Our Department of Public Works, Joyce Department of Landscape, Jeff Easter, and General Services, we all are going to have a need for it and going to be able to use it. And I'd like to say, and you, Mark's dad and uncles, and they've been in business in Huntsville for years and years, and they've also given bath to community and like, thanks to Mark, to continue that tradition. But it's a power brush, it's going to be used on snow and ice, on the sidewalks, rocks. If you go out here during the summer, you see a lot of ducks and geese, they usually leave some things after they eat. That's going to help us out, getting that cleared out. But I'd like to introduce Mark, and Mark's going to say, we certainly appreciate it, and thank you a lot. Mark is over Mark Haddon Lawn and Care, and I'm going to go ahead and say it's on Metro Circle. Anybody needs anything, go by and see, but he can tell us a little bit more about it.
Yeah, real quick, I just want to thank the Aaron's Company and Tom Gargis for choosing us. They have a promotion with these machines, and they chose us to have one to give away. And when they did that, the first thing I thought of was, yeah, the city of Huntsville could probably get the most use out of this, and find a lot of different things they may could use it for. So, you know, this is a good opportunity, and just to get up in front of the city and, you know, help out any way we can.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if we could have Coach Patterson come up, he has a recognition of a state champion.
Mayor, thank you, and tonight, we're going to honor the young lady that ran for Huntsville High this year. Abby, if you'd come on up, this is Abby Whittenbeck. And she is the Class 7A State Cross Country Champion this year. I think it was in November was the actual event. And two things that's unique right here, Abby, stand either side, it doesn't matter. Number one, she is an eighth grader at Huntsville Middle, and she runs for Huntsville High. So she beat people all the way up through 12th grade to win this. So there's a chance she might be back more than once.
Really?
And...
Abby, here's a first.
Yeah. Yeah. And the second thing I'd like to mention, if her father, Jeff, would stand, we have a second-generation state champion. Jeff was the 1979 State Cross Country Champion at Huntsville High School. So we've got two state champions in the same family. So congratulations to both of them.
Congratulations again, Abby. We could have Kenny Anderson come up. We have our Kathy Youth of the Month, and very special person. And Kenny, would you like to bring your crew up, and also bring up our nominee, our awardee?
All right, if my crew would come up, then? While they're coming up every month, we have the privilege of honoring a local student who is doing something positive in the community. It's called the Star 99.1 Kathy Young Citizen. And we started this about a year ago now. We've honored quite a few students and other youth in the community. It's our privilege tonight to present Haley Briggs, our latest winner. She is the December winner of the Young Citizen of the Month Award. We've got to do something with that. That's a long name. Got to do something with that. But we work very closely with a number of organizations in the community, including Star 99, Huntsville Utilities, the Human Relations Commission, Dine Corps, the Office of Multicultural Affairs, and a variety of other things. And at this time, I'm going to ask, we always ask for a nominator to tell us about this person who's doing great things. And we don't often have the nominator with us, but tonight, we do. So I just want you to say just a few things about Haley, and why you nominated her.
Thank you so much. We are just so proud of Haley. We, at Mary Mack Hall, are lucky enough to have hundreds of teenagers that volunteer with us in our program of arts education for people with special needs, and they're all exceptional. But Haley is by far the most exceptional of all of them. And if she is any indication of what wonderful servant leaders we have coming up in the next generation of our community, then Huntsville has got a really bright future. And we're just so grateful to her for her service to people with special needs, and so proud of all that she's accomplished.
I think you said she volunteers about 10 hours a week?
More than that. She's every single day of the week and the weekends, year-round, year-round. And with children who have Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, autism spectrum disorders, and we just couldn't make it without her. And she's a wonderful friend to them, as well as a tremendous leader for them.
And we also learned that she's an extraordinary dancer. We want to ask you to do that tonight.
She's a national, she's a national... She's a national title holder, like the national champion dancer of what, what was it?
Teen National Prodigy.
Teen National Prodigy of the whole wide world.
All right, so, so very quickly, we're going to present you with a few things, Haley.
Haley, we're just so proud of you, and glad to have, to give you this honor. We've got a certificate to present to you, and it says, "Kathy Star 99.1 and the Human Relations Commission of the City of Huntsville is proud to honor Haley Briggs as the Kathy Star 99.1 Young Citizen of the Month."
I'm Bud Stevens with Star 99, if you can't tell by the radio voice. Thank you. Congratulations, Haley. Once again, this is something we're all very excited to be a part of. We talk about it on the air all the time. We love to, the young citizens that bring so much to our area, and are really proud of themselves. So congratulations on everything, small token of appreciation, very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
And I'm Joe Gertis with Huntsville Utilities, and we're proud to be a part of Kathy. I'm standing in for Dr. Hobbs tonight. I'll try to fill his shoes. But we're just proud to be a part of this. We're proud of you, some tokens of our esteem. If your folks haven't bought you a tablet or an iPad yet, one will fit nicely right in there. Merry Christmas, and thank you so much for your leadership and your dedication, and this community is going to need you going forward.
Thank you so much.
This is a simple online, there's a simple online process to nominate. We need your nominations, we need your help to tell us who's doing what out in the community, just like Haley. Thank you again, Haley.
All right. Haley, again, congratulations. Could we ask Chief McFarland to come forward? We have Medal of Valor presentation, and I think Chief McCombs may be coming with him. Our fire chief and deputy fire chief. And Chief, you want to tell us a little bit about our, let's see, our Medal of Valor?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is, I was thinking about this as coming up here. You know, we do a lot of presentations, and a lot of them, you know, we see repeated. This is a citizens medal of valor. This will be the first one I've ever presented, this is the first one I can remember us presenting since I've been a chief officer in Huntsville Fire and Rescue. November 16th this year, there was a house fire on Montdale Road. And two gentlemen came by and looked outside, and it was a lady outside with a garden hose, with smoke and flames coming out of a window and some other areas, and she was spraying the garden hose toward the fire. They stopped to see if they could help, and she was in a panic, and they were trying to keep her from going back in. And also, from finding out the rest of the details, there was another lady still in the house. Now, when it had been called, our trucks were on the way. We had about a three-and-a-half-minute response time. But during that time, a lot of things can take place. Upon finding out there's another person in the house, one gentleman confronted that lady and wouldn't let her go back in, and the other gentleman went in through the smoke and flames, and got the lady and brought her to safety. Brought her out through the smoke and flames, out the front, and got her out. He not only saved those two lives, but could have quite possibly saved the lives of some of our responders, because we would have went in to do the initial search till we made sure the house was clear. And upon their arrival, they knew the house was clear and could concentrate on putting the fire out. But I'd like to ask at this time, Adam Dixon and Jeff LaRose come forward.
Thank you. Adam, I'd like to present you this. It's our citizens medal of valor that I would present you, and it's got our Huntsville Fire and Rescue Maltese cross on the front and a date. And what happened, it's an instant engraved on the back of it. Jeff, I'd like to present you, I'll try to get the box closed back up, but the same, the same medal with the same, the same thing on it. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all.
Guys, thank y'all very much, and thank you for being a special part of this community and for what you've done. We also have tonight a presentation by the Huntsville firefighters to the Liz Hurley Fund. And guys, y'all want to tell us a little bit about that, and bring our crew up here? I think we have a rather large contingent here in pink shirts, maybe?
We will. Thank you again, Mayor. If I could ask our pink shirt, our pink t-shirt committee, all the members to come up, and I'd like to ask Local 1833 President Steve Jones, I'll give you the microphone, let you tell a little bit about what y'all have, some of the work y'all have done, and...
And the check.
And Liz Hurley, would you come on up also, please? I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Y'all probably are not going to like me having the mic, because sometimes I get carried away and talk a little bit too much.
I'll stand real close.
But I'd like to begin by thanking Chief McFarland. This has been a joint venture now for the last five years, and it's been a very successful venture. And without the support of the chief and his office, it wouldn't be as successful as it has been. Every October, when we can begin this, we're allowed to wear these shirts on shift. So we'll show up at your house in a fire truck, and there'll be a bunch of pink t-shirts come rolling out of the fire truck. Whether you understand this or not, it has a calming effect on the people with EMS calls, because half of those EMS calls, they kind of forget what they're hurting, where they're hurting, and they're wanting to know, where can we get a shirt like this? How do we do that? So pink seems to calm a lot of problems. But anyway, we, as I said, we have been doing this for the last five years, and including the check that we're going to present tonight, we have raised a total of $79,000 over the last five years. And we were honored by the Breast Center, 1st of October. They gave us a waiting room in the name of Huntsville Fire and Rescue and Huntsville Firefighters Association for the work we've done with raising the money. Now, none of this could take place without the citizens of Huntsville and Madison County purchasing these shirts. So we appreciate their participation as well. But I'll introduce the people up here. Tracy Krista, who heads the committee, and didn't want to speak, but y'all probably wish she had by now. Jeff Statham, Scott Wisnet, David Herr, Evan Reed, and there are a few others that couldn't be here tonight. The logistics and the planning, the preparation for this project is always a lot of man-hours, and they put in the time and the effort, and we've always been successful. So I will now be quiet, and ask Liz Hurley to come forward, and we will present this year's check in the amount of $12,000.
Oh, my God. $12,000? It's a lot of t-shirts for autossynthesis machines. That is amazing. So that brings a grand total for the last five years of?
$79,000.
$79,000. That is terrific. Again, a whole lot of t-shirts. You all are in the business of saving lives every single day. We saw that just a few minutes ago. This money is going to save lives, right here at Huntsville Hospital's Breast Center. We have the largest single-site breast health center in the state of Alabama. This is going to help women of the city of Huntsville when it comes to getting a diagnosis of breast cancer, and hopefully not getting a diagnosis of breast cancer. This will help to purchase a 3D mammography machine, actually, two of them. So this is going to go a long way to making a lot of women very, very happy. 200 women every day, just yesterday, had mammograms done at the Huntsville Hospital Breast Center. On average, one woman every single day at the breast center is diagnosed with breast cancer. So if we can help them and find it earlier at a more curable stage, that's saving lives, too. So thank you for continuing Huntsville Fire and Rescue to support the Liz Hurley Breast Cancer Fund. We appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you. And Mayor, thank you for coming out to the ribbon run this year. It was great to see you. Next year, we're going to get you walking it. Maybe the governor won't come to town.
Guys, thank you for all your work. I have my pink t-shirts, such I wear when I walk in the morning, and I feel very comfortable in my masculinity in that pink t-shirt. Good. If we could have Chief Morris come up? We have some employee incentive award. Do we have our employee here?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always an honor for me to recognize our employees that do an outstanding job, and I'd like to call up Lieutenant Dwayne McCarver. The city of Huntsville has an employee incentive program that recognizes employees that perform at an outstanding level. And in addition to that, they take it a step further, and they come up with an innovative idea, or approach, or equipment that benefits us in our public safety mission. And then they implement it. Lieutenant McCarver saw a need for something we've been talking about a long time, which was an individual medical kit. And that's a medical kit carried by each officer, as a matter of fact, each law enforcement officer in Madison County. He researched the idea with the medical community and with the first-response community, and then he made contact with Huntsville Hospital, and through the benevolence of the Huntsville Hospital Foundation, they assembled these kits and provided kits to every police officer in this county, so that the police officer will have an individual medical kit in the event that they find themselves in a situation where they are required to render life-saving first aid. So that value is, can't have a dollar value put on it. And Lieutenant McCarver, we appreciate that for what you've done. Thank you. Job well done. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And we'd like to ask Bill Steiner to come up, because we also have a few other employee incentive awards. It is December, and we have had a lot of employees who have been working great for the city of Huntsville. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, as you know, AssetWorks is a commercial off-the-shelf software product that the city purchased to help with fleet management. And we have some outstanding employees that did a lot of hard work on that. If I could ask Linda Marler Parker, and Keisha, and Dwayne to come on up here. And while they're coming up, I'll just describe it. This is, as I said, a commercial off-the-shelf product that helps us manage our entire fleet across the city. Helps us manage the fuels, the repair costs, the parts. If I sat here and described the whole thing, we'd be here a while, so I won't. But as always happens, any commercial software we buy won't exactly fit into what we need for a city this size. It's these computer programmers behind the scenes, and really, or behind the screens, I should say, it's the part you never see, the software. They'll get in there and tweak it, and bend it, and twist it, and make it do what the city needs to do. Their hard work has really been so successful with this. Thank you very much.
We have two resolutions for adoption. We have 2A is a resolution congratulating Pastor Mylon Burwell upon his 20th anniversary as pastor of the Mount Zion Primitive Baptist Church. A commemorative banquet will be held at the Holiday Inn Huntsville Research Park on December 19th, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Dr. Showers, do you want to say anything about this?
Mr. President, I will be presenting this resolution tomorrow night, on behalf of the mayor and the council members.
Thank you, sir. B is a resolution commemorating the life of Bishop Kenneth L. Tate. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Mr. Culver, do you want to mention anything about this?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to share just a part of this resolution tonight, as promised, to the family. Whereas the city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, are apprised that Bishop Kenneth Louis Tate, 54, of Huntsville, Alabama, departed this life on December 16th, 2014, at 9:34 AM, at his home surrounded by loved ones. And whereas funeral services will be held at 11:00 AM on Saturday, December 20th, 2014, at Progressive Union Missionary Baptist Church, located at 1919 Brandon Town Road, Huntsville, Alabama, with Bishop James E. Kellam officiating. Intimate will be in the Valhalla Memory Gardens. And whereas Bishop Tate was educated in the Madison County school system, and attended Alabama University, Huntsville, Alabama, he received a bachelor's of science degree in biblical studies at American Baptist College, Nashville, Tennessee. And whereas, visitation will be from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM on Friday, December 19th, 2014, at New Shiloh Church Ministries, located at 5101 Maston Lake Road, Huntsville, Alabama. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council and the mayor of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, for and on behalf of the citizens of the entire city, join with the family and innumerable friends in mourning the passing of Bishop Kenneth Louis Tate, and wish to commemorate his life and service to his family and fellow man, adopted and approved this the 18th day of December, 2014. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. We have no announcements, we have no business with outside legal representation, we do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-859, amending the approved development plan for Providence Plan Development, LUI rating 56, to add to the permitted uses in the various transects. This was set November 6th, 2014, at the regular council meeting. Ms. Leto?
Lisa Leto, Planning Department. This is a major change to the Providence Plan Development. The Providence Plan Development was used based on SMART code, and it is divided into transects, and each transect is representative of different uses and densities. And in the areas you see here, the purple color is open space, permanent open space. The green that you see here is transect 3, that's single-family homes only. The yellow that you see throughout the development is transect 4, and that's various housing types with limited commercial uses. The orangish color that you see here is transect 5, that's primarily commercial in nature with some residential uses. And the white that you see here is transect 6, that's their commercial core area, their downtown, if you will. And the pale blue areas that you see are the civic areas, those are open for public use. The major changes that they've requested includes adding uses, excuse me, to the Providence Plan Development within the various transects. And the first one that you see here would be within transects 4, 5, and 6, excluding transect 4B and transect 5C. And that would be assisted living facilities, specialty care assisted living facilities, and nursing homes, as defined by the Alabama Department of Public Health. And as we go through here, these highlighted areas are changes that were made based on neighborhood meetings after the first public hearing held at Planning Commission. After those meetings were held and these changes were made, another public hearing was held at Planning Commission, and the neighbors agreed that these changes met their needs. Within transects 5 and 6, excluding transect 5C, banquet halls, banquet establishments, and meeting places when incorporated within a multi-story building, special events retailers, mobile food vending units, subject to the following regulations. And the listed regulations are the same as recently adopted citywide mobile vending unit regulations. The only changes have to do with the times. And so within the Providence Plan Development, the times would be 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Wednesday, and 6:00 AM to 11:30 PM, Thursday through Saturday. There would also be street vendors, including food kiosks on private property, subject to the following regulations. And again, these following regulations mirror the mobile food truck vending regulations. And again, these following regulations mirror the mobile food truck vending regulations. Moving on, we have within transects five and six and civic, excluding transect five C, outdoor retail sales, including but not limited to Christmas tree sales, farmers markets and art shows, car shows, outdoor performances of music plays, festivals, and movies, and parks, amphitheaters, and other common areas. Within transect six, inventory storage facility where the primary physical use of the structure is for onsite inventory storage of the business's product. Provided however, that the total square footage allowable for the entire plan development district shall not exceed a maximum total of 20,000 square foot, 25,000 square feet of floor area. No outside storage of goods, wares, or merchandise is permitted within the premises. Within civic, excluding civic D and civic F, carnivals by special exception. And within all transects, community gardens and common areas. The exceptions that you see are the areas that are already developed within Providence. And those are the ones that are on the east side of the creek. So the major changes would be here and the undeveloped areas on the west side of the creek. And again, Planning Commission has recommended approval of these changes.
Thank you. Does anyone from the Public West District Council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers. Who is the second by? Mr. Culver? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance. Ms. Leto, is that the last one you're going to do? Come on up, back up then.
Please.
For those of y'all who don't know, Ms. Leto is retiring.
This is her last meeting with the city. And it's not a joyous, I know that you're not going to cry, but it's got to be one of those sad occasions that you will not be able to come to council anymore.
I'm going to still call out your name every time anyway.
Well, we want to thank you for 25 great years.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Ms. Nichols, you ready? Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-861, rezoning property lying west of US Highway 231 South and north of Green Cove Road from Light Industry District to Residence 2B District and from Residence 1B District to Residence 2B District. This was set November 6, 2014, the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is a total of 6, 9.04 acres. It's located on the west of US Highway 231 South and north of Green Cove Road. The rezoning request is for Light Industry to Residence 2B, which is located in the red areas here. And there is also a portion that is requested from Residence 1B to Residence 2B. And this item was recommended by Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Does anyone from the Public West District Council on this particular issue? Mr. Cox, you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Cox, 4029 Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, when I read the write-up on especially the one about the light industry, when I read it, I was a little bit concerned about changing a light, from light industry to residence, taking away the opportunity for maybe permanent jobs into jobs of only building houses. And then those jobs go away. And especially in light of the location for this particular property. It is very near the river. I understand, of course, that we don't have a real good access to the river. But it seemed like it, industry near the river would be a plus. And also just across, we have rail service close to there. Of course, it's across the parkway. But so we have those two services that might conserve light industry. Then I took the opportunity to come down and meet with Ms. Nichols. Let me stop here right now and say, I found that meeting, Ms. Nichols was very knowledgeable, very friendly, very helpful, and I appreciate the time that she spent with me. I did learn that light industry might be a misnomer. There's probably about everything in the world can be put in that location that's designated light industry, except industry. So I don't know if we'd be losing jobs or not. But we have some, you know, we have opportunity in a lot of places throughout the city to have residential property, but we have few locations where we can have residential, I mean have industry, that is zoned industry. So I really think, it may be too late too, because a lot of the area around it, I'm sure at one time it was industry also and has already been rezoned into residential, unfortunately. So we just need to always be concerned about taking away property that is zoned for industry and put it in, changing it to residential. But again, Ms. Nichols, I mean, Mr. President, I recognize and thank Ms. Nichols for her help in getting me through this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Does anyone else wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Culliver, discussion? Ms. Cox, if you wouldn't mind for the public to just discuss some of the things that Mr. Cox asked. I know you answered his questions in your meeting, but if you would talk about why the city, it's advantageous to change light industry into residential property in this location?
The existing subdivision here, this portion was previously light industry. It was rezoned back in 2012 by the current property owner and is currently being developed into a subdivision. And the proposed rezoning is for additional phases for that particular subdivision.
And are we having any problem finding land for any company that wants to come into town?
I don't think so, but this was the request of the current property owner also, so that the zoning will be consistent for the entire subdivision and not three different zoning districts.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-863, rezoning property lying on the north side of Old Highway 431 and west of Mill Run Road from Residence 1A District to Neighborhood Business C1 District. This was set November 6, 2014, the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is a total of 1.32 acres. It's located on the north side of Old Highway 431 and west of Mill Run Road. The current zoning is Residence 1A District. The current property owner has petitioned to rezone the property to Neighborhood Business C1, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning highlighted in the green. It's currently vacant land and this property will be for future, a future residential development. And this was recommended by Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone from the Public West District Council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-865, rezoning property lying on the south side of US Highway Business, Highway 72 and on the east side of Moores Mill Road from Neighborhood Business C1 District to Highway Business C4 District. This was set November 6, 2014, the regular council meeting. Ms. Leto, Ms. Nichols, sorry.
This property is a total of 10.23 acres. The current zoning is C1. The proposed rezoning request is for Highway Business C4, which is consistent with the surrounding zoning, south of Highway 72 East. This property is also located on the east side of Moores Mill Road and it's highlighted in the green. And this will be for future commercial development. And this item was recommended by Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone from the Public West District Council on this particular item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Culliver, second by Mr. Culver, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-867, zoning newly annexed property lying on the east and west sides of Mooresville Road and on the north side of Huntsville Brown Ferry Road to Highway Business C4 District. This was set November 6, 2014. Ms. Nichols?
This is newly annexed property. It's approximately 104.63 acres. This property is located on the east and west sides of Mooresville Road and on the north side of Huntsville Brown Ferry. It's currently vacant land and will be used for future commercial development. The proposed zoning district is Highway Business C4, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning.
Thank you. Does anyone from the Public West District Council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-869, zoning newly annexed property lying on the south side of Parsons Road and east of Hobbs Island Road to Residence 1 District. This was set November 6, 2014, the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is newly annexed land. It's approximately .61 acres. It's located on the south side of Parsons Road and east of Hobbs Island Road. The proposed zoning district is Residence 1, which is consistent with the surrounding zoning. It is currently one single-family detached dwelling that is existing on the property.
Thank you. Does anyone from the Public West District Council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing a city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Mr. Benyon?
Yes, this resolution identifies 32 properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. The properties are identified on attachment aid by the owner and location. The owners received written notification by regular mail that they were in violation of the ordinance and was given 14 days to correct the violation. All 32 owners failed to respond and community development issued work orders to cut the properties at a total cost of $7,142.97 and an average cost of $223.22. Attachment aid also identifies the date and cost for cutting these properties. The owners received a written request by regular mail for payment and they failed to respond. So we are requesting that property assessments be placed on these properties in order to collect the cost. The owners were notified of this proposed action and couldn't wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Benyon. Does anyone from the Public West District Council on this particular issue? Public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We have one public hearing to be set. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on a resolution approving of and assending to vacation of and vacating a portion of National Boulevard and Meadowbrook Drive abutting the New Grissom High School campus. This will be set for January 22nd, 2015, at the regular council meeting. The chair moves to set the hearing.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're not in communications from the public. When I call your name, please come to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council. Dennis Martin. Welcome, Mr. Martin. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Dennis Martin, 3409 Venona Avenue, apartment 305.
Welcome.
Okay, I'm here about sidewalks and bus shelters on Venona Avenue, Elizabeth Street, and Glen Park Drive. It's in Northwest Huntsville District 1, Mr. showers. And I'm here to try and see if we can get some sidewalks and see if some bus shelters can be put in at the Glen Park Creek Bend area, specifically on Venona Avenue, just south of Maston Lake, by the United States Post Office. It's just south of Elizabeth Street. In August of 2012, I presented the council with a petition with over 250 names. It wasn't returned to me from area residents wanting these sidewalks and these bus shelters. After that day, we got some pavement, we got some potholes covered, and we got one bus shelter put down after we had this meeting. Brought this to the attention of the council. I have some pictures of the area if anybody wants to see them. And also, I would like to say that Congress enacted the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, in 1990 to ensure all citizens the right to participate equally in society. Title II of the ADA requires federal, state, and local governments to provide equal access to public government facilities. In the United States, most sidewalks are constructed and maintained by local governments. By providing ADA-compliant sidewalks, local governments allow all citizens safe access to participate in public life. Currently, our neighborhood does not have adequate sidewalk access for our community, which was, which has a substantial population of school-aged children and disabled individuals, particularly our veterans, who must travel to and from schools, retail establishments, and government facilities on a daily basis, either on foot, by wheelchair, or motorized scooter, scooters. Without sidewalks, it is inevitable that there will be injuries caused by traffic or poor conditions of the payments on which they could travel. And you can ask some of your first responders, our police, our fire department, our EMTs that got to travel down Venona and Elizabeth Street, it's a deep curve right there. You cannot see traffic. There are no sidewalks for our kids to safely negotiate that road. So like I say, this is my second time coming up here to ask the council and the city to try to help us out with this issue. And just let me know what y'all can do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Hamilton, can you help us address this, please?
Yes, members of council, myself and Mr. Hatfield actually went and visited that site today and drove up and down Venona. As you get probably about 300, 400 yards south of Maston Lake, there's an apartment complex that is obviously a place where there's probably the greatest density of residents that would need to be able to walk up to the post office, which is on the corner, actually on Maston Lake. There are some challenges there. The, some of the elevation changes and things will make it difficult to put in a sidewalk. That doesn't mean it's not necessary, but there's also the curves and things. We've got to, we need to get traffic engineers to assist and really define where is the appropriate place to put the crosswalks and things because the way in which we'll need to do the sidewalks will actually encourage people to cross the street. And where the bus stop is and where that apartment complex is, is in a deep curve, as the gentleman stated. And it would not be a safe place to have a crosswalk. So we've got to put some engineers' eyes on what's the right way to do it where it is safe and then decide how to do it. It will not be an inexpensive project. It likely will require a fair amount of excavation of a hillside that goes all the way down the road there and some retaining walls and things in addition to the sidewalk. So it will not be a minor project. We're going to need to get it designed and just determine what's the best way to accomplish what he's asked for there. So I was not aware of the concern about the bus shelters. There is one there right outside of that apartment complex. But I'll get with Tommy Brown and we'll take a look at what we see as the need there and what's the appropriate place to put bus stops.
Thank you, sir.
Let me correct you. The bus shelters are at the first seven-day Venice Towers.
Sir, it's now your turn. Dr. showers, did you want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Martin is correct. He called me this week. And I spoke with Mr. Hatfield. In fact, we talked about it today. Mr. Hamilton is correct. But I will assure you, Mr. Martin, that your situation will be addressed this time.
Yes, sir.
I've been out several times to look at the site. It's a unique site in terms of the terrain and how it's located. But we have enough engineers that I think we can design a situation. Are you not hearing me? It's my, I call my name. But I think that Mr. Hamilton is correct. The engineers will come out and develop a plan to give us access to the ability to leave the neighborhood, to leave the elderly home that's in the curve there and to make their way to the post office back and forth.
Without getting in the street.
We have another, Mr. President, situation there. We have a resident home for young ladies.
Ray house for teenagers.
I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, I know you want to participate in this. We can only have one person speaking at a time and it's Dr. showers's floor. Dr. showers, please go ahead.
So, Mr. Martin, just give us a minute.
Yes, sir.
I said that two years ago.
Yes, sir.
And we did go out and look at it, we checked it. And, but as Mr. Hamilton has indicated, we will fix this problem.
Thank you, sir.
And appreciate you coming out tonight.
Glad you to be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kelly McCauley? Ms. McCauley, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please. Kelly McCauley.
Kelly McCauley, one zero two one eight Melanie Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. Wanted to address counsel tonight on some comments I read in the newspaper today from Councilman Kling regarding the percentage of minority religions that are represented in invocations in front of this council. I do agree with the councilman that often there's a lot of controversy and the messenger sometimes drowns out the message. When I appeared here a few months ago to give an invocation, there were thousands of comments on social media and online, far exceeding my expectations, and it even eclipsed sports stories that were being talked about at that time. And I agree, that's too much attention. I think that time will ease this problem as the community becomes more familiar with minority religions that like to stand up and present their views to the council in the form of an invocation. I would ask you to not seek to proportion the number of leaders that give invocations merely on the number of people that attend churches in this community because, as the article pointed out, a very large population of Madison County, forty-nine percent, simply do not attend church and are not part of an established religion. And a number of Christian friends have indicated to me that they wish the council did not have invocations. So please consider that in the future if you endeavor to change your practice here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie Reed. Ms. Reed, welcome back from your surgery.
Thank you very, very much. You know, I appreciate that. Tomorrow, we'll take the pins and the stitches out and we'll see where I go from there. I appreciate your concern and care. Thank you for laying public input. Sometime, I wish you could buy some new microphones up here. I think we have a hard time of hearing the people and reaching them and all kinds of things going on. I don't know if you can afford it and I'd be good. Thanks for laying the public input.
And Ms. Reed, if I could help you, speak directly into the microphone as loud as you can and it will work.
Okay, don't be wobbling around. Okay.
Okay.
These are new. That's why I don't like them, I think, anyway. I want everyone to pray for those who have lost loved ones. I understand many have lost their loved ones right here at Christmas. And believe me, it's very, very sad when you lose your loved one at any time, but the songs and the Christmas makes it even a little bit harder on everyone. I want to thank all of you for putting up with me for another year. Thank you. We made another year. I'm happy. And I want to thank all the city employees for the great job that they do. And I'd like to thank you all for the good job you do, but then I'll get to that later. I'm sure I'm going to come up with something later on it. Remember, love is the greatest gift that you can give to anyone for Christmas. Love, it doesn't cost anything. It gives a little strength and a little effort to go tell your family and your friends that you love them. But to me, love is the greatest gift that you can give anyone at any time. And I love y'all, believe it or not. Sometimes I know you wonder and think about it, but I do. I love you. I have to pray to keep from coming down here, but somebody won't let me quit coming down here. There's some issues that I'd like to bring up. I didn't want to do that and it's Christmas, but first I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy, safe, and holiday and hope that we'll all be back next year. My main issues, one of my main issues, is that the last council meeting on this Sealy property over here where he's going to put this condos for fifty years for a hundred dollars a year, that really is bothering me. And then he bought another piece of property. And I drove down there this week to check that property out. And at the meeting, he did it to the city of Huntsville. Now, did he did it to you so you can tear that brick building down? I mean, you don't have to answer me, but I think I got the right idea. He did it that property he bought from another person to the city of Huntsville so y'all can tear the building down like he did his stone, I guess. I don't know who's going to tear it down, but I'm looking into it. And is it true? I don't know this. If people develop on city property, do they pay property taxes? Somebody can come up with some answers. I doubt they do, but anyway, I was just checking it out.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask you, get another minute, please.
The jail.
Sure. Councilmembers, that okay?
It's Christmas. I need five minutes tonight. Yeah, thank you.
Let's work with one minute. Let's try.
One minute, I heard. This jail deal is really bothering me. You know, I've been trying to keep up with it for years and asking you about it, but I didn't get all of it. And WB, all the four that's listed on the agenda tonight, explain every piece of this. Y'all keep telling us we gonna get money. Money's a-coming. Money was a-coming. I never believed it was coming in the first place. Fifty million overrun? Is elected officials not keeping up with what's going on in the city of Huntsville? That is absolutely disgrace. It's a city and a county build a jail like that. Fifty million overrun? I'm glad y'all don't work for the arsenal or the contractors down there. They shut you down in a New York minute. Anyway, I'm still on holiday homes over there. I'm still fussing about the Scruggs Center and Aquatic Center. We don't have anything going on in downtown Huntsville. Please don't give the city away. Please, we don't need you giving our city away. I love you and have a merry, merry Christmas. I'll be back. Thank you.
Mr. O'Fallon, the Sealy property that was gifted to the city, was it anything more than a parking lot?
The property that was gifted to the city has a building on it. It will be torn down by the developer so that he can redevelop it as part of the larger tract of land.
Okay, thank you. And could you answer Ms. Reed's question on property taxes? She asked if somebody developed on city property, would they pay property taxes?
Absolutely. If they are private improvements, then property taxes are assessed against those improvements. So there will be property taxes on whatever is built above ground.
Thank you, sir. We're now at eight Huntsville utility items, eight A through F. Councilmembers, are any items you would like to hold and specifically discuss? Eight A is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase annual Alabama one-call membership dues. B is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase three natural gas detectors. C is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase a current transformer analyzer. D is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase a power factory factor test set. E is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase outside professional services for digital imagery. F is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase annual on-base software maintenance. The chair moves for consolidation approval of eight A through eight F.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. All those in favor, consolidation approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kling.
While the gentleman from Huntsville Utilities is up here, at the last meeting, a gentleman from the public had asked about the natural gas rates. And I think in the last two weeks, we've seen oil and natural gas rates have continued to decline, very much so. And I guess the question is, I was asked at the last meeting, is there any effort, planning, process going on to decrease those rates to the public?
I'm only vaguely aware of our specific rates. I do know that our rates have been secured through some purchases that we've made going forward for some extended period of time. If you're looking for a very specific answer, Mr. Kling, I'll have to get back to you on that. But, and I'm not prepared to comment on whether or not we have a decrease coming. We have secured a very affordable rate, which I'm not prepared to quote to you right now, but I will be prepared at the next council meeting to address that specific item. Mr. Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We have several board appointments you voted on. One is a resolution to appoint George T. Hamilton to the Advisory Commission on Accessibility for a term to expire January tenth, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to reappoint James R. Ledbetter to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority of the City of Huntsville, third director, for a term to expire January first, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. showers, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Three is a resolution to reappoint Dr. Eddie Green to the Advisory Commission on Accessibility for a term to expire January tenth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Four is a resolution to reappoint Roberta Ray to the Advisory Commission on Accessibility for a term to expire January tenth, two thousand eighteen.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have two nominations. Nomination to reappoint James L. Splawn to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority of the City of Huntsville, first director, for a term to expire January first, two thousand nineteen, and a nomination to reappoint H. Harold Stevens to the Special Care Facilities Financing Authority of the City of Huntsville, Redstone Village, for a term to expire November eleventh, two thousand nineteen. And the chair nominates Jeff Johnson to take the place of Mr. Bill Yeh, who has resigned from the Land Trust Board. Are there any other nominations? Councilmembers, Ms. Stamper's asking. She says that the Solid Waste Disposal would like James L. Splawn to be appointed tonight. Councilmembers, do you want to do that? I don't, I haven't been asked myself. I don't know if it's important or not.
I would certainly support it. I just kind of hate doing something that wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
I could support it.
It, it.
As a nomination.
And I'm very much speaking out of turn, but it may be important to, there's an RFP that's going forward with the Solid Waste Authority for our garbage to steam facility, and it may be important to have him on board for that. He has been very instrumental in that.
Well, councilmembers, I will, I guess we're going to have to break our bylaws and I'm going to, since Mr. Splawn is already in the position. Mr. O'Fallon, will he stay in the position as long as we don't appoint somebody else?
Yes, if his term expires, then he holds over until a successor is appointed.
So we're okay either way, then?
I assume so. I mean, I don't have the enabling legislation before me, but that, you know, typically members hold over until their successors are appointed.
Mr. President, I guess for whatever it's worth, just for the record, I have no intent or interest in supporting anybody else besides him if it came up tonight or at the next meeting. I don't know if it would give him some comfort if everybody on the council said that, well, we won't vote tonight, but we're not going to oppose him or nominate anybody else. And so basically, he would be unopposed, being nominated tonight at the very least. We could do that. Or bring it up for a vote.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'm moved for Yanis consent to take up this nomination tonight. Dr. showers, how do you vote on Yanis consent? Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have Yanis consent. Is there a motion to?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers was a second, Ms. Robinson, Dr. Robinson. We have a motion, a second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Are there any other nominations? We're now moving to ten, approval expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Dr. showers?
Mr. President, I move tonight to pay eight million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirteen cent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. showers, do you have a finance committee report?
Mr. Tip, would you come forward?
Councilmembers, Mayor, I can give you one report, and that's for our sales tax for the month of November. The collections were point nine percent, almost one percent higher than the previous November. For the year, that puts us at four and a half percent above the first two months of FY fourteen. So our budget requirement is three percent, so we started off in good shape. October did include, as I mentioned last time, some unusually high items that don't happen very often. So we really need the numbers to get a little bit stronger off November in order to meet our budget goal. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. showers. Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. As most people realize, it's strange to see the year two thousand fourteen coming to an end, and this is the last meeting of two thousand fourteen. Next time this council meets, we'll be meeting in two thousand fifteen. And it's been a year. You know, it's been a year of a lot of achievements. I want to thank the council. The council has been very good partners in that achievement. We've been able to see good things happen on the job side. We've been able to see great things happen on the education side. We've seen great, great things happen on quality life. And I think that we, as a community, have a lot to be thankful for this Christmas. And it's a great Christmas season. So to each of you, we wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a happy and prosperous two thousand fifteen. For some of the formal things that we have to do tonight, I'd like to announce the following reappointments. Kyle Collins to the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire ten twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen. Carlos Matthews as a supernumerary member of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire eleven seventeen, two thousand seventeen. I'd like to remind all of our city employees that we have the open house in administration, invite all council members and everybody else out there, and even you, Ms. Reed. We would love to have you come tomorrow as we have our open house in the administration from three to five on the eighth floor. So please come, and there will be plenty to eat, and we'll celebrate out the holiday season. There's also, there will be Christmas on North Side Square Friday through Sunday from five to seven. Candlelight Community Christmas Eve service, five thirty on North Side Square. We have skating in the park until January fourth, and they've had double the attendance that they've ever had in the downtown area. We have two hundred and forty-three trees and tinsel trail that you can go look at, and trees from businesses, communities, and individuals from throughout this community. And it's a great way to get in the holiday season. Also, there will be a New Year's Eve cotton ball drop and fireworks sponsored by Tara May in honor of Operation Green Team. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Congratulations again on the ball drop. You will be dropping the ball. It's too late for me to stay up, but I wish all those well who are up at midnight there. And to everybody else, we want to say Happy New Year to you, Happy Holidays. We hope you have a very Merry Christmas, and after tonight, we'll see you in two thousand fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Mr. Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I understand it, there is a work session that's scheduled for, is it January the fifteenth, Mr. Culver?
That is a request that we're making, Mr. President.
Okay. Well, anyway, I just want to ask that whenever the next work session is, I'd like to add discussion of the John Hunt Park Plan. The council members had received a memo from Mr. Hamilton about a proposed plan and everything, and one of the things had to do with components of Joe Davis Stadium. And I'd like to ask if we could have that added to the agenda for discussion when we do have our next work session, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Also, a couple of things I want to ask Mr. Joffrey on about. Mr. Joffrey and I've been contacted, and there have been questions that have been raised about the, what I call an oldie but a goodie, the rescue mission relocation issue that took place along University Drive. And people have had questions. They want to know what the involvement of the city was. I guess the question I want to ask you in a nutshell, was it the city government who chose the specific site where the rescue mission relocated, or how did that process work?
The city was not involved in the selection of the new location for the rescue mission at all. That was a choice made by the owners of the rescue mission. The city just merely purchased the property where the rescue mission had been, off on Seminole Drive.
Okay. And also, and I think as I had mentioned to you and had placed on the agenda, can you explain the process that we are in as far as the opening prayer process that we have at city council meetings? I think it'd be helpful for the public to understand, and I guess along with that, can you explain what involvement council members can have and how we are where we are right now?
Well, the process has kind of evolved, particularly over the last three to four years in light of response from organizations that were critical of the council's process and in light of one or more Supreme Court decisions. The way it has evolved is that principally, a member of the Interfaith Mission Service volunteered to help assist the council with creating a roster of clergy and others interested in providing invocations. And that was in response to, I guess. And that was, that was in response to, uh, I guess, uh, kind of a declining roster, uh, that the council had had of people willing to participate. I think the same two or three or four people continued to give the invocation, uh, at each council meeting was very Christocentric. Uh, um, per, uh, most everyone, uh, was Christian, did not include, uh, representatives of other faiths. Uh, that's, that's not entirely true. I mean, there were, there were exceptions, but for the most part, it's the same three or four people, which generated a lot of criticism and some correspondence from organizations that, uh, that are, that are promote religious freedom. So, the Interfaith Mission Service volunteered, uh, and gratefully, they, they got involved and, and helped the council, um, I think with the, the, um, approval of the councilor or the council president, to create a roster and to develop some general guidelines for people who are willing to participate in providing invocations. They can't dictate what goes into the prayers, and they can't tell them what they can or cannot say, but generally encourage them to provide messages that are uplifting and that, and they encourage community unity and support and, and good government. And they, they gather names of people and contact those people to see if they're willing to participate, and then provide either a list of those names to the council staff or submit a name, um, based upon a calendar that they've generated, uh, for the next regular council meeting and six, uh, succeeding council meetings. They, uh, the Supreme Court, within the past year, year and a half, came out with a decision that has, uh, confirmed, uh, or affirmed, a local governing body's right to have prayer, uh, at the beginning of, of their meetings, uh, so long as no one is coerced into participating, uh, so long as the council does not direct what is said, what is not said, and so long as it includes those who wish to participate. It doesn't necessarily have to include, um, every conceivable, uh, either religious group or a religious group, but people who express an interest and want to participate should be included in that list. And that's kind of how we have evolved into the practice today. And, uh, I think there is, there, there is a calendar of, of people who, um, are scheduled to participate, at least for the, you know, the next several council meetings, and then there, there are many open spots as well.
I guess a question again, um, I'm just kinda thinking, as the community as a whole, you got five council members. We, we represent the community as a whole, uh, within the district I represent. Of course, yes, there are, uh, Baptist, quote, Christian faiths, but in addition, there, uh, uh, there's a Korean church that I know of, and at the same time, there are Oriental faiths. Um, can I be involved in the process of inviting or encouraging these people to be added to the list, uh, to not cut out, but to basically celebrate and expand, uh, you know, the representation of the community?
Sure, Mr. Kling, that's, that's a council decision, and I would encourage all council members to get together and decide what kind of process you're comfortable with. Um, uh, I've, uh, the process now is not written in stone, and any three members of the council can choose to alter that process, or you don't really even have to vote, you can just get together and decide what you want the process to be.
Well, the idea is not to, um, turn our back on the Interfaith Mission Service, but just to see if we could compliment and add in, because, uh, one thing that seemed kind of glaring to me, there was a, a council meeting, uh, I think it was the second meeting in November, uh, that preside, and, uh, uh, there was a gentleman who, uh, oftentimes I see in this room, who, uh, uh, had never been called upon. And, uh, I thought that he was certainly a leader in the community, a very well-renowned, uh, pastor, and, uh, it just seemed like, it seemed right to have him do it, and, uh, before he has a heart attack, I'd like to say that I think he had it, he did a great job. And, uh, that's an example of the types of things I could see where we could participate in the process, not hurt or try to elbow out the Interfaith Mission Service, but just to, you know, let us as representatives of the people be involved to, you know, help in the process.
Again, that's, that's totally a council decision. I would just encourage that whatever process you adopt, that it be somewhat organized so that there aren't, there's no duplication of effort.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Joffrey, and, uh, certainly, I hope everybody has a great, uh, New Year, and, uh, look forward to seeing everybody next year. Thank you.
Dr. showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Tony Smith is here tonight. I want him to stand, uh, to help me recall. There was a vacancy, a person resigned on one of our boards, and it has been some confusion. I nominated Dr. Terrence Vikastha, uh, two weeks ago, and I've been told that that's not a vacancy on that board. Can you help us with that?
Mr. Smith, if you'll introduce yourself, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I'm Tony Smith, uh, former, uh, board member of the Early Works Board.
Mr. Smith, we're having trouble hearing you, and I'm, I'm, Ms. Reed, so the microphone's bad, but if you could speak directly into the microphone?
Okay, I'm Tony Smith, former board member of the Early Works Board. Dr. Camille Ri- uh, Wright, who was part of the City of Madison, uh, school system, took my spot. Since that time, she's the, uh, city superintendent down in Enterprise, Alabama, so that particular spot is still vacant on the Early Works Board.
Does that answer your question, Dr. showers?
For the record, I would still like to submit, uh, the name of Dr. Terrence Vikastha to fill that spot. I have put resumes in all of your boxes on him. And so at our next meeting, I would like to vote on that. Uh, just again, introduce it again tonight, 'cause I've already nominated him.
Yeah, and I, I don't know particulars, we'll have to find out if the person has resigned, and, and I'll check on that, and, and if they've resigned, we'll get a letter from them saying they resigned, and then we'll know, notify, I'll notify you that there's an open board slot?
Okay. Been busy since our last meeting, Mr. President. Uh, as most of us have, attending to various receptions and, uh, Christmas, uh, events. Uh, on this past week, I was invited to go out to Howland's Elementary School. Uh, there's a Liberty Foundation program that's in our city, and they honored a hundred fifth graders, uh, out there at Howland's School. And their main gist, uh, was citizenship. And they were honored, uh, good grades, and, uh, so we participated on behalf of the city any council by just being there, supporting that program at Howland's Elementary. Uh, I had an opportunity to attend, uh, invited, uh, reception for General Dennis Baugh, uh, this weekend. And then this week, historical situation happened. A pioneer in our city, uh, Dr. Sonny Herbert the Third, where the old Terrahikes was, the new elementary school that's gonna go in at that site is gonna be named Sonny Herbert the Third Elementary School. Uh, the mayor was there, and several of our officials were there, uh, to participate, uh, in that groundbreaking. And of course, uh, mayor, they asked me to take the shovel, and I said, "No, y'all keep the shovel." Uh, but that was a very historic, uh, situation there. When you look at the fact that Sonny Herbert the Third, uh, made history in this city, uh, he, uh, made it possible for children to attend s- s- schools that they had not been able to attend in the past. Uh, he is on record, he's in the history book, that he enrolled his son in the Huntsville City School, uh, to integrate a school that had not ever had black children to attend. So they honored him this week by naming the new school, uh, in his honor. I had an opportunity to present a resolution on behalf of the mayor and the council members, uh, this weekend. Etna Sheraton, uh, retired from, uh, the government, and we presented her a, a resolution. Uh, I had a chance to go by the HEA reception, uh, something that I've done, uh, for the last bunch of years. Um, uh, Bernice, I was in the school system for thirty-six years, and I've been going to this reception since two oh five. Uh, you can count the numbers. Uh, I was delighted, uh, certainly, uh, on, uh, yesterday. One of our former city workers, James Crawford, mother was funeralized, uh, at St. Barley Church yesterday. Some of you remember, uh, James, uh, when he worked for the City of Huntsville in our recreational program and in community, uh, development. Let me say now, I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson?
I wanna begin by thanking, uh, Public Works Traffic Engineering for being so responsive to some requests that have come from constituents. Your responsiveness helps me to do my job, and for that, I am very grateful. Uh, I have learned in the last, uh, month or so, serving on the council, that, uh, we eat a lot in this city. We've had dinner with, uh, the city employees, the seniority dinner, and I can extend my congratulations to all those folks who have been working for this city for a really long time. I, I said that night, "Now I know why they do such a good job serving the city. They've been practicing for twenty-five years or more doing it," and I congratulate them on that. I've also had the opportunity to have lunch at the South Precinct with the officers there, as well as at the airport and the VBC, and I've learned, uh, so much about what the city is doing. But I think my very favorite, um, eating opportunity was breakfast at six-thirty in the morning with the sanitation workers. It was really great to sit down and talk with them, and I got to meet the, uh, those men who serve my family, Daryl, Daryl, and Johnny. And, uh, I am, it makes me very, very grateful for all the people who are serving our, our city. This, I'm just struck by how much, uh, just a sense of family there is. So, uh, from my family to yours, I wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and many blessings in the new year.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just, uh, and I had planned to send you an email, um, regarding a possible, uh, work session on the fifteenth of January. Um, hopefully, all of us will be available. Um, things should slow down perhaps after the holidays a bit. Uh, one item that I want on the agenda is the parity pay as it relates to the fire department. Um, and Mr. Hamilton and Mayor, I hope that both of you can be there as well, uh, to, um, look at this more in-depthly. Also, if I may digress for just a moment, um, December fifth, Oakwood University students, in conjunction with other local universities and, uh, people from afar, uh, participated in a, what's called a die-in, where they did that in honor of two of our American citizens who were, uh, killed, uh, for lack of a better description, uh, by, uh, law enforcement. Uh, I just want to applaud our chief of police, who, uh, officers handled that situation very well. Of course, I know, Mayor, you were involved in it, and I was involved in it, Oakwood, uh, university president, Dr. Pollard, and other members in our community, uh, Pastor T.C. Johnson. Uh, uh, i- it was a great event, and I want to thank you all the way that you handled that. Seemingly, there was some miscommunications about, you know, why police were there, but, uh, our law enforcement teams, both the Huntsville Police Department, uh, the state troopers were there, I wanna thank them, the Madison County Sheriff deputies were there, I want to thank them, but their purpose of being there, uh, was to protect all of our protesters, our students, so that they could peacefully exercise their freedom of, of, of expression. And to protect the motorist, uh, I know there were some inconveniences there, but, um, without regards to where you may stand on that issue, uh, it's, it's certainly incumbent upon us to protect the constitutional rights of all people, and, and that was the, uh, purpose of that. Um, having said that, uh, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a very prosperous New Year as we, uh, continue in January, 2015. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. We're now at thirteen, unfinished business items for action. Thirteen A is ordinance number fourteen dash nine thirty, transferring one mental health center driver position to the city public transit, para-transit program. This was introduced December fourteen, fourth, 2014, the regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
I approve.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have three new business items for introduction. Fourteen A is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land lying north of Zert Road and on the east and west sides of Arnett Road. B is the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter Three, Article Two, subsection C of section three dash twenty-seven Arts and Entertainment District ordinance of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, to establish the Quigley District, Entertainment District Two, Meridian District. C is the introduction of an ordinance amending section two of ordinance number eleven dash two-five-nine regarding the beautification board. We're now at fifteen, new business items for consideration or action. Please let the chair of any items you'd like to hold. The chair holds fifteen O, fifteen R, fifteen S, fifteen U, V, W, X, and fifteen double K. Are there any other items you'd like to hold?
Yes, I, I had those same items myself, would include Y.
So right now, we have O, R, S, U, V, W, X, Y, and double K. Are there any other items? Hearing non, fifteen A is an ordinance declaring property surplus and commending said property to Friends of Four Hundred Foundation, Inc. B is a resolution authorizing mayor into agreement between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Madison County Mental Health Center to provide public transit services. C is a request authorization to advertise and fill vacant and budget position of public transit manager one at higher than minimum salary if necessary. D is a resolution authorizing mayor to sign the platent titled Resubdivision of Block Three Oh One of the Quigley map. E is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreements with low bidders meeting specification outlined in attached summary of bids for acceptance. F is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. G is ordinance amending budget ordinance number fourteen dash six-six-five by changing appropriating funding for various departments and funds. H is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number fourteen six-six-five by changing authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. I is a resolution authorizing mayor into agreement for consulting services between the City of Huntsville and Joe Summers. J is a resolution authorizing mayor to special deployment agreement between the City of Huntsville and Jimmy W. Welborn. K is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute an, an agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business as Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the City of Decatur for the transfer of grant funds. L is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business as Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the City of Madison for the transfer of grants funds. M is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business as Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the City of Port Payne for the transfer of grants funds. N is a resolution authorizing Huntsville, the, the mayor, to execute an agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business as Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Marshall County Commission for the Transfer of Grant Funds. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement between the City of Huntsville and Low bidder Reed Contracting Service, Inc., for Highway Seventy-two West Traffic Improvement Project, project number sixty-five fourteen T one zero, TI zero four. Q is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the City of Huntsville and Low bidder Wiregrass Construction Company, Inc., for Downtown Gateway Harvard Road Extension Rebid, option number one, project number sixty-five eleven RD zero three. T is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute professional service agreement between the City of Huntsville and Columbia Telecommunications Corporation Doing B- Business as CTC Technology and Energy. Z is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke CBNS bank letter, credit number five-five-five-five-eight-two for Ansley Farms Phase One A subdivision. Double A is a request for authorization to advertise and fill vacant equipment technician two position at a higher than minimum salary if necessary. Double B is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Community Action Partnership of Huntsville Madison and Lime- and Community Action Partnership of Huntsville Madison and Limestown Counties in the amount of seventy-two thousand for the operation of Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program. Double C is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement between the city of Huntsville and North Alabama Coalition for the Homeless, Inc., in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the operating and maintenance[614.14]
Contractors, Inc., Zurich North American Insurance Company and Fiber Fiber Bond Corporation. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious? Ex is a resolution authorized mayor to execute a settlement agreement between the Public Building Authority and Dawson Building Contractors, Inc. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious? Council members, if you would, I'd like a moment of privilege to ask some questions to Mr. Easter about this. Is this okay with y'all? Mr. Easter, if you don't mind coming down here, one of the questions I have is what lessons did we learn from this process? The public certainly wants to know, and I want to know, what did we learn? What are we doing better now? And I do want to preface, you had no involvement in this. You actually came in and saved us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I would, I can tell you, counsel, there's been a lot of improvements and changes that's came from the experience of going through the project. I'd like to mention just what I think's a few of the top items. The first thing that we have that I'd like to mention is we have an on-staff architect. The architect on staff, that gives us a professional licensed architect that will only look at issues from a city perspective. So that is, that's a huge improvement that we didn't have back then. There was no architect on staff for the city. We have an on-staff estimator. That's something that we didn't have at the time. I tell you that, the estimator doesn't, the title estimator doesn't really explain the overall job that this position does. The estimator monitors and manages all of the documents that have dollar values associated with it. They monitor all the pay requests to make sure that the pay applications, the dollar values match the amount of work that's been done or it's been completed. They monitor all the change orders and they ensure that every item has the proper amount of material takeoff. And so that position almost pays for itself just from ensuring that we get the right value for the amount of money that we pay. In addition to that, I can tell you, we've established some new policies and procedures in selecting architects. I feel this is one of the major items that's new based on all this. We now require that the architect of record or the primary architecting firm has to be a local firm. We want to deal with a firm that's vested in the community. We want a firm that is, has a reputation in the community at risk, just like the City of Huntsville. That also applies to all the subcontractors and all the professional engineers that work for that architect. We also have, put a requirement on the architect that he must also hire a local engineer. In addition to that, we've worked with the legal department to make changes to all the documents that we deal with. And there's a whole lot of, obviously, there's the main contracts, but there's contracts with architects, there's contracts with the contractor. We've established a pre-qualification process for the contractors that want to work or perform construction work for the City of Huntsville. We now have a pre-qualification process that if the contractor doesn't meet our requirements, they're not even allowed to bid. And we set those requirements, they're based on higher levels of experience and higher, and more complex jobs than the ones we're asking them to do for us. We don't want a contractor to come in here that this is the most complex and the most expensive job they've ever done. So we set new thresholds of what they would be allowed to do. In addition to that, as you know, the finance department is implementing a finance system, Tyler. It has a project management module that's going to help us greatly to keep up with the dollars and manage all the dollars, and I'm looking forward to that system coming live. In closing, I'd like to tell you that since the jail project, the project office has completed sixty-seven, over sixty-seven million dollars worth of projects that have been on time and in budget. And some of them have been very high-profile. You'll recognize them, the Bear and Bluff Building up at the Borough Communication, the Art Museum Expansion, the Veterans Memorial Park, the new council court parking deck at Twickenham. So I can tell you, from my experience, I think there's been a tremendous amount of improvement. It's not just been us, but it's been a team effort with legal, finance, procurement, and administration.
Thank you, Mr. Easter.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kling.
Mr. Easter, and let me just say, I'm not going to, you know, try to put you on the spot. This is probably just a drop in the bucket on this process, but do you know or can you get for the council, I guess, the quote, "projected cost savings" for the police department as a result of having this jail with the county? When this thing came out, we were being told that the operating and personnel cost of the police department were going up and that by consolidating with the county in a jail over a, I don't know, the life of the facility, was it supposed to be thirty-five, forty, or fifty years? But what the cost savings would be by cutting down the increase. If you don't know, I'm not trying to stump you, but maybe you could provide that for us at a future meeting. Talk to the police chief.
I'll see if I can help you with that. Really, my department's a facilitator to build the project and then turn it over to the operational department.
Okay. I see the police chief, but again, it's not to stump, and again, this is probably just a drop in the bucket, but I think it would be helpful to know, you know, what the results were. And, Mr. President, I think I see the police chief coming down. I don't know if he wants to speak about this now or maybe at a later meeting, but...
Chief, if you're going to speak, go to the microphone.
Okay. I guess the question, I guess one question. What is the projected life of this jail supposed to be?
It's a fifty-year facility.
Okay. So I guess, just curious, what a fifty-year savings was for the police department as a result of doing this? We can find that out later. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Easter.
Council members, any questions for Mr. Easter? Thank you. Moving on, thank you, Mr. Easter. Fifteen Y is a resolution authorized mayor to execute the master agency appropriation agreement between the City of Huntsville and various agencies. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling. Dr. showers, did you have questions?
Is Mr. Reggie McKenzie still here tonight? Yes. Council members, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. McKenzie. He's a board member on the Harris Home for Children, and I'm just delighted that he was able to attend this meeting tonight. And of course, our finance director will be in touch with you as a board member and your leader very soon. This action tonight gives the Harris Home an opportunity to continue to serve the boys and girls in our city. Appreciate your presence tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I allow him to make a comment at this point?
If that's your wishes, it's fine with me. Sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Reggie McKenzie, 106 Heather Spring Court, Huntsville, Alabama. I'd just like to thank the council, the mayor, and the city for their support of Harris Home for Children over the many years. We just celebrated our sixty-year anniversary. The community came, supported it very well. We're still getting checks daily from that event, and we just appreciate a community like Huntsville. And definitely want to thank Dr. showers for his support and leadership in pushing this forward, and we're looking forward to many, many more good things, not only from Harris Home, but a collaboration with the city as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Further discussion on fifteen Y? Dr. Robinson?
I have a question. These grants vary in amount from two thousand dollars to eight, over eight hundred thousand dollars. What's the accountability process for the folks who've received these grants? Do they report back in any way? Do we have specific metrics for them?
All of these, most of these agencies are agencies that have been receiving funding from the City of Huntsville for a number of years. Just procedurally under state law, we are required to enter into a contract with them as opposed to just giving them money because they are private entities, and we may have to ensure that they are providing some legitimate public service in order to receive that. At one time, we had an attachment that was kind of a report to fill out and send back. I don't think they, I don't think organizations really provided much detail under that attachment. I'm not sure what information is submitted by each organization to the city each year for review. I think that's simply an administration and council decision at the time of budgeting to determine whether they're going to receive funding or not and in what amount. And in terms of accountability, perhaps finance director or maybe the administration can better answer that question.
And Dr. Robinson, we get all their annual reports. They send them to each council member, and that's how they keep us informed.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious? Fifteen K is a resolution authorized mayor to enter modification zero-zero-four to the lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Bailey Cove LLC for office space lease contract renewal.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Chief Morris?
Chief Morris, my questions are concerning the length of this lease. I believe it was two years, and I know there have been some talk or plans to move into the old Grissom Building. Have y'all made a decision on where you want to go in two years, or can you kind of tell me why you started on two years for this lease?
Well, it actually has a three-year opt-out. I mean, we can get out after thirty-six months. That's for future planning, in case we do.
So it's a three-year lease? Because I read it as a two-year, I must have misread it. But anyway, what was the rationale? When do you think we'll move to Grissom? Are we already planning on moving to Grissom, or are we just waiting to see what happens?
I'll let Mr. Hamilton answer that.
Mr. Hamilton, sorry.
Members of council, we, as you know, once both Grissom High School and Johnson High School are vacated by the school system, the intent is for the city to gain possession of those and then reutilize those facilities. The planning for those are in the early stages. In this particular case, we're talking about the old Grissom High School site, and there's a number of different uses. At this point, the master plan does still envision a new police precinct on that property for South Precinct, though we're not locked into that. The planning department has just recently engaged with a firm to assist in helping us work through that master plan for that particular property. As you know, there's a number of other private entities that also are looking at potentially, I say private, outside agencies like the library and arts council and others that are looking at some opportunities in there as well. And so we'll lead a planning process for that over probably about the next twelve months or so to really envision where that goes. The opportunity does exist to move South Precinct there, though we're not locked into it. They could stay where they are, or we could potentially find another property if we determine that to be the appropriate answer. But we do have the flexibility to move them on to the old Grissom site. The decision, if we make the choice to locate them on to that site, then we'll need to decide, is it more appropriate to renovate space in the existing school building, or is it more appropriate to do tear-down and build new? I think that'll mostly be really a financial decision, which way can be done the least expensively. But we are a long way away from really being able to make that kind of decision.
And so I guess what I want to make sure is everybody's talking and everybody agrees this is the right length of a lease? Five years?
It's a five-year lease, Mr. President, with an opt-out after three years.
Okay. Well, I really misread it then. And so, does that sound right to me? That sounds too long to me?
No, because we don't expect to gain possession of that property until probably January seventeen, and then there would be probably at least a year, more likely eighteen-month construction timeline, so I think it'll mesh pretty well.
Okay, thank you. That was my concern. Further questions?
Mr. President.
Dr. showers.
I don't have a question on the Grissom site and the line, but since Mr. Hamilton has been working on both sites, and you told us once, some of the proposed opportunities that's going to go into the vacated Johnson High School, could you briefly give us another description of what's being proposed for that site after they move over to Pulaski Pike?
We can. We've had, you know, some of this started before I arrived to the city. You know, Mr. Reynolds has actually led some early discussions on it, and then since then I've engaged also with some of the agencies that have considered occupying that site. In addition to our own police and fire academies potentially moving there, there's also been some discussion with state agencies to include the National Guard, some law enforcement agencies and others potentially going there. I would say that's still a possibility, though at this point, I'm not extremely optimistic that we would have others that come there. As I've looked at that site, I think there's also great potential to leverage the existing recreational facilities, and so I think there's a lot of opportunity to do more than just those things that we've talked about before. But really, we're in the same position we are with the old Grissom site, that we're in the very early stages of envisioning that. I think that we, you know, we certainly owe it to the community to pick up the pace on that, and that's something I'll, an effort that I'll lead.
My final point or question to Mr. Hamilton, when we are at that stage, will we involve the public in what we're going to be proposing for the vacated building?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we're voting on fifteen K. All is in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Curious? Now, non-roster communications for the public. If you'd like to address the council, please go to the microphone. You'll have three minutes. Mr. Cox?
Jerry Cox, forty-twenty-nine Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm sure the council knows that been some time that I've talked about the wars that's going on, and I'm catching a lot of flak out in the community and out on the street for not doing that. In fact, today at the bank, I was at the bank about eleven o'clock, and the gentleman comes up to me and takes me to task for not doing this. So as a veteran of the United States Army, I wish to respectfully acknowledge that in the past few weeks, we've had five United States Army soldiers, one United States Navy sailor, one United States Air Force airmen, and two United States Marines, one a nineteen-year-old from California, one a twenty-one-year-old from Indiana, that has died in the wars in the last few weeks. Mr. President, as I celebrate the birth of my Savior next week, I will not forget the members of our military that are still dying in wars in Afghanistan and now again in Iraq. Mr. President, Councilman Kling brought up the downtown rescue mission relocation a while ago. The rescue, rescue mission relocation has been many years ago now. I guess my question is, what happened to the city's need to straighten a curve when they bought that property? Now, there was no curve, there was never a curve there, there's an intersection there. There's two roads, there's one road heading east and west, one road heading north and south, and it's not a perfect intersection, and it is, does sort of curve, but it's not straightening out a curve, it's doing something to an intersection. Since that time, I'd like to know what percent of the property is used by the city? Second, how much has the city spent to maintain that property and the utility cost since it was vacant, since they bought it? And third, has the city changed its planned usage for that property? Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I don't know if Joy McKee is here. She may be able to answer some of his questions.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we can answer them all tonight, but we can find the answers. We'll get back to you, Mr. Cox, and we'll get you, I'll get you an answering email or writing form, and you can read it out at the council meeting if you'd like to. That's okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address comments? Sir?
Mr. President, members of the councils and administration, and Mayor Battle, citizens, good evening. As my good friend Jackie Reed all the time, we do thank you for the privilege to be able to speak to the council. Last week I had, or earlier this week, I had the privilege of...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Reggie Hill, thirty-eight thirteen, Sturbeus Drive.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. President, I was able to attend the groundbreaking of the Sunny Hurford School, and as a native of Mobile, Alabama, and a graduate of the first high school in the state of Alabama, which took a hundred and twenty years before we saw any students of color, and a hundred and fifty-two years before we saw a person of color to become a black valedictorian, to become a valedictorian, this was a very influential and important occasion for myself as well, as I saw one of my fraternity brothers and friends be honored. I have not always been in favor of initiatives from the school board, but this was one thing that I must say that I was very pleased to see, and this truly honored that gentleman. I'm happy to see the city moving forward in such a manner. One of the things that Dr. Hurford mentioned was the strain of relations between people of colors, whether it be white, black, or, you know, any nationality, for us to be able to cohesively work together. And we've seen through incidents across the nation as this has began to escalate. We also witnessed that Huntsville Times reported earlier this week on an excessive amount of money that was spent for infrastructure to expand incarceration, or a stereotype that believes that we will need to expand incarceration in the future. I come today to present an opportunity to the council as well as the city for us to invest in programs that will dilute the need to focus on incarcerating individuals. I want the opportunity for us to be able to work cohesively together on programs that can change the mindset so that we can understand that these citizens can be contributing in a positive manner. I had the privilege of meeting with a few of the council members today, and we have discussed the idea, and I believe that it was something that was appealing and that could move forward. I would hope that we can open a dialogue and discussion about how we can properly move forward and understand that we are investing funds so heavily on buildings, infrastructures, and things that really have no substance value. We could truly invest in kids and the young people and their mindset so that they can grow up to not be these delinquents and these individuals that cause so much crime, violence, and negative situations in our community. So I will be forwarding this information in the upcoming week, hoping that it can be on the next agenda, and so that we can invest in something if we do it as a committee, as a commission, or if we go into business in the city as a nonprofit, whatever initiative that we need to take, it needs to be done, because we are in a time now where if we don't prevent it, once it comes, it's going to be hard to dilute it. And we would rather us put a plan in place now than to have to deal with a situation where we have to put even more pressure on our chief and captain who works so tirelessly to ensure that we have a safe community. And so I'm hoping that we can have a discussion on this. I'll have the information for you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Dr. showers.
Have we decided when the next work session is going to be?
No, Mr. Culver has requested we have one January fifteenth, and that's what we're looking for, but I haven't confirmed that with the council, but we'll do our best.
Mr. President, just one last-minute correction, if I may. We could entertain February fifth. I think seemingly that might...
Yeah, I'll, we'll poll everybody and try to get a work session as soon as possible.
Mr. President, at the last council meeting, I had requested a document be provided to the council members, and I have a document that I received from the attorney just before the council meeting started, and I've not had a chance to review this to see if it's all there that I asked for, and I'm going to ask until I can see that these three vendors have complied with the request. We won't move until I can ascertain that. That may be tomorrow, it may be the next council meeting, but at tonight, I'm not ready to move on that, and I would ask the council until I can look at this document, and you have a copy of it, before we move forward to go ahead with it. I'm not saying that it's not going to be approved. I think all three vendors are reputable, and this document, I just need some time to look at it, and I'll get with the attorney as soon as I do that.
Members of the council, the documents are in order, have been determined to be in order by the finance department. These contracts have been awarded. I think the old contract has expired. I don't know that we have any reason to delay proceeding with the other contracts. I'm not even sure that we can, but I'll discuss that with Mr. Easter and with the procurement division and Mr. showers afterwards.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you. I'm back. I want to also thank Mayor Battle for the invitation to the open house. Appreciate that very, very much.
He meant especially you, not even you.
I know.
He said it wrong. I was reading his notes, he just made a mistake.
Appreciate the invitation very much. I need to walk through and see what's really going on. I also attended the Dr. Hurford groundbreaking, and I was not for changing names of schools in the city, but this one was so well-deserved, and it was a history lesson to sit there and listen to what happened and what this gentleman did in the city. I mean, it was a great honor. I think it's one of the best that I've ever been or been to. I only want to ask a few questions more about that jail. Two-point-three million is supposed to be paid by whom? The insurance company? I see the insurance company's name in there on a settlement.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if the taxpayers are paying the two-point-three million or the insurance company. And then I got another question, a big, big question.
Okay, Ms. Reed, ask me your questions.
Eight years we paid lawyers' fees, attorney fees. Eight years. That's a long, long time. I'd like to find out how much the lawyer's fees were for those eight years and who paid those. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Joffran, could you explain where the two-point-three million dollars will come from?
It is coming from insurance companies representing the private defendants in the lawsuits. It's not coming from city taxpayer funds.
And Mr. Joffran, do you have an idea of lawyer's, attorney's fees the City of Huntsville has paid in the last eight years?
Well, I have a general idea of the amount of money that was spent on litigation-related expenses, but almost half of that was diagnostic work to determine the extent of the damages and how to propose and redesign the fix for the jail as it was constructed moving forward. That total was around three and a half million dollars, but about half of that was the diagnostic and redesign fees for the other professionals. Not all of that was legal expenses.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Mr. President, before you let the public back to attorney, the document that you sent all of the council members earlier gave some numbers. Can you tell us tonight, once all of this is clear, a tentative amount that the city will derive from the settlement?
As of today, and of course, as I mentioned, we have not settled or resolved things with regard to all of the defendants, but with regard to the defendants that were parties to the agreements that you approved tonight, the city will receive twenty-two thousand dollars net after the split of the monies that are put into the pool. So after the two-point-three million dollars that paid over to Dawson, then as a result of splitting the remainder, the city right now has twenty-two thousand dollars in that pot. That number could change significantly or nominally, depending on how things go with regard to the other defendants.
Who else will share in this, other than the ones that we have just approved tonight?
What other defendants are remaining?
Yes.
Rayleigh is a design firm that worked with the module construction firm, and then American Pan and Engineering is a masonry, concrete and masonry subcontractor. And there's several other very small defendants, but they don't have much responsibility and really don't have much to contribute.
But they will share in the two-point-three million?
No, sir. The two-point-three million, that's, those are the agreements you approved tonight. That's Bibler Masonry, Fiber Bond, the manufacturer of the modules, and two W.R. Holmes Wilkins, the architect and design team. Those are the three entities whose insurance proceeds are going into the pot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kling.
I guess just so this year doesn't end on such a negative note with all this other stuff that we've been talking about, I'd just like to thank the people of the Merrimack, Rockview, and Cryon Village Neighborhood Associations for their great Christmas events that they had, that they invited me to over the last two weeks, and I hope everybody does have a great holiday season and a great Christmas and good football team, a success.
Is there any other business that needs to come for the council? Where, Jern?